Opening statement, please.
Township of Howell, Planning Board Meeting, Thursday, May 12th, 2022. They hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open, adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 7th, 2022, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Trittown News. Second, on January 7th, 2022, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on January 7th, 2022, said notice was posted in the office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. Members of the public will have a chance to ask questions and comment on applications once the chairman opens the hearing up to members of the public. If you wish to ask questions or comments on an application, you will need to use the Raise Your Hand feature, and I'll bring you into the meeting one at a time. You'll need to have audio and video capability. You will be sworn in, and you will need to provide your name and address. For anyone calling in on the phone, you can press star nine to raise or lower your hand and star six to mute or unmute yourself. This meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bavai?
Here.
Mr. Cristiano's been excused. Mr. Dorado?
Here.
Mr. Greenfield?
Here.
Mr. Husser's gonna be late. Mr. Nacastro was excused. Mr. Seaman was excused. Councilman Ponovich is absent. Mr. Spanville was excused. Ms. Talente?
Here.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Can everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? A moment of silence for all of our first responders and those both serving here and abroad. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral. Thank you. Let me pull up the agenda again here.
Ms. Sparrow's having trouble. Her Zoom keeps crashing, but I brought her back in. We'll see if she can get on now.
Is Brian frozen, or is he not able to hear us?
Brian, are you okay?
I can hear you. I'm sorry. Yes.
Okay, perfect.
There you go.
And they're sharing.
You were just sitting there standing. Approval of minutes?
I have no minutes this evening.
Vouchers?
I have no vouchers.
Correspondence?
I do have correspondence. I have a letter from Adam Fiala, who is a counsel to Monmouth Commerce Center. They are requesting an adjournment from tonight's hearing to the June 16th hearing to provide sufficient time to respond to the review letters from the Planning Board's consultants. The applicant will notice for the June 16th hearing, and they've granted an extension of time for the Planning Board to June 17th, 2022. And they did not notice for this evening, so... But they just need to be adjourned to June 16th.
Fair enough. Thank you. Steve, you want to read into the record for anybody that's here for the Michael Hammer application?
No, that was Monmouth Commerce.
Oh, Monmouth Commerce. Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Well, Monmouth Commerce, they didn't notice for this evening, but they're on its agenda, but I'll just say it anyway. So if anybody's here for case number SP 1100, Monmouth Commerce LLC, that here will not be proceeding this evening. The applicant asks that it be carried to the Board's regularly scheduled meeting of June 16th at 7:30 PM. The applicant will be publishing and providing notice to all those entitled to mail notice. So a Monmouth Commerce Center is not going to be here tonight. You hear June 16th with notice to be provided.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more?
Yes, I have a letter from Greg Vella, who is the attorney for Michael Hammer. And he has discussed this application with Mr. Cuchero this morning. And based on that conversation, they're going to carry the application to a date in the future. They'll need to revise their plans to make certain adjustments regarding lot lines. And as a result, he cannot schedule a date for the next hearing, so he anticipates having revised plans within a month or so. But he asked that the application be, I guess, carried, but they'll renotice when the hearing date is determined. And they've granted an extension to the Board for an additional six months from today's date.
Okay, so how do we deal with that and not continue to keep spots in the agenda that somebody else may be able to take?
I'll just put him on when he's finally ready and...
Got it. Okay.
So just, I guess, an announcement that he's not being heard tonight, and he'll be renoticed when he is being heard.
Fair enough.
Okay. If anybody's here for case number SD 2994, Michael Hammer, minor subdivision, that application is not going to be heard tonight. It'll be heard at some date in the future, which has not yet been determined. The applicant will be providing notice, both published and mailed, when the hearing is scheduled sometime in the future. But if you hear Michael Hammer, that's not going to be heard this evening.
That is all the correspondence I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any resolutions?
No resolutions.
Mission waivers, case number SD-23002, Frederick J. Hare.
And that's Mr. Cohen's case?
Okay. I can't hear it.
Okay, so then we don't have a...
We don't have a quorum for Mr. Cohen.
You know what, Chairman? Maybe we'll wait for Mr. Husser to arrive, and then we'll deal with the waivers.
That'll work for us. Is that okay with you, Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay.
I'm gonna move you back out then, Todd. Thank you.
Okay. Applications for the Board are case number SD-3003CI for Howell Township. I guess I should check the application, development application. Who's the attorney for that one?
That is just, we have Justin Yost, the township engineer is going to be here for that.
Okay. You think this is going to be a quick application? Because I feel bad that we weren't able to get to the solar project.
I think it should be pretty quick.
Okay, fair enough.
I hate to say that, though. Should ask Jen and Laura. I think it should be pretty quick.
All right.
Thank you.
Hey, Justin, since you're going to be testifying as the engineer for the subdivision, I'd like to swear you in.
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Yost, do you swear affirm that the testimony provided for the Planning Board this evening will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, Justin. Please proceed with your case.
Sure. Good evening, Chairman, Board members. Like I said, no attorney involved. It's just me, so I want to give a quick overview of what we're here for tonight. Doing a capital improvement review, minor subdivision application to subdivide Block 3582, Lot 41.04, which is commonly known as 4544 State Highway Route 9. We're meeting in the building here. It'd be easy for everybody to see. This is the AutoZone property that's located immediately north of the municipal complex. And what we're here tonight to ask approval for is to do a minor subdivision. So I've got one aerial map I would like to bring up if I can. This is just a aerial image from March 8th, 2020. Route 9 is running north to south.
It's, yeah, Justin, it's not the whole thing. It's like you shrunk it, and it's... Can you try it again? There you go. Leave it just like... Nope. Go back one. Leave it right there.
Right there.
Yep.
Like I said, Route 9 is running north to south in the middle of the page. New Friendship Road is at the bottom. This is the Shoprite Friendship Plaza on the left-hand side of the page. And shown in blue here, labeled Lot 39 and Lot 40, is the municipal complex. Both properties owned by the township. So the subject property is showing red. That's the AutoZone property. Properties located in the HD1 Highway Development Zone. So AutoZone came in front of the Plan Board, I believe, in August of 2017, and it's the final site plan approval. As part of that application, they ultimately built a one-story, 7,000-square-foot retail center, has approximately 41 parking stalls, stormwater basin, loading area, trash enclosure, lighting, landscaping. So all of that's been constructed and approved. And after that application was completed, the township approached the property owners and AutoZone to see what the plans were for the wooded property and the wooded portion in the rear of the property. After some back and forth of the property owner, it was finally decided that there was no plans for that. They have a long-term lease with AutoZone, and they would be willing to donate that portion of the property to the township. So as you can see on that aerial, that's the kind of gold dashed line. That's what we're looking to subdivide off and create two lots from.
Thank you.
Can you see this sheet?
Oh, yeah. We can see the yellow line.
Right. So this is the subdivision application that was submitted as part of this. This plan was prepared by Mazer Consulting. It's dated, it's labeled Minor Subdivision for Howell Township, Lot 35.82, Lot 41.01. It's dated July 15th, 2020.
See, we're still seeing the colored aerial exhibit.
Mr. Chair, I could probably just cut through it. I mean, so at the end of the day, the back piece that's wooded is going to be subdivided off into two lots. The AutoZone lot is going to be...
Hold on, hold on, Miss Bean. Steve, could you please swear in our professionals?
Sure. Jennifer and Laura, do you both swear affirm that the testimony provided before the Plan Board this evening will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much.
So the AutoZone lot's going to be just shy of 52,000 square feet, and the balance that's going to be dedicated to the town is about 27,500 square feet. At the end of the day, the town is not subject to any zoning, so the parameters of the lot that the township will ultimately take possession of really do not require relief because the town is not subject to its own zoning. So at the end of the day, this subdivision requires one variance, which is for the 52,000-square-foot lot that the AutoZone will retain, where 80,000 square feet is required in the zone. I think what Justin had indicated is that the property owner has a long-term lease with the AutoZone. They don't have any need or desire to expand the existing operation, and the owner feels that what would be remaining would be more than enough to satisfy that operation. So what's before you is a request for a variance for the 52,000-square-foot lot that the AutoZone would remain on.
Fair enough. Is that the end of the testimony?
Much.
Does the Board have any questions? If not, we'll open it to the public. Open it to the public, I believe?
At this time, the chairman has opened the hearing up for members of the public. Anyone wishing to ask questions or comments on the application, please use the Raise Your Hand feature, and I'll bring it into the meeting one at a time. Remember, you will be required to give your name and address and be sworn in. If you're calling, please use star nine to raise or lower your hand, star six to mute or unmute yourself. And right now, there are no hands raised.
Okay, we'll close the public portion of the meeting.
Hey, the chairman has just closed the public portion of the hearing on this application.
Okay. One last call. Does the Board have any questions? Mr. Yost, does this conclude your testimony?
It does.
Okay. That being said, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thank you.
I'll second it. RB, I can't talk. Stop calling.
Mr. Bavai?
Yes.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Ms. Talente?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Justin. At this point, Brian, do you want to start the Monmouth Solar, and then we can break in for five minutes for Todd when Nick gets here?
Absolutely. Yep. So we got case number SP-1099, Monmouth Solar, One LLC.
I have Grace Chun is the attorney. Grace, can you tell me who else you need brought into the meeting?
Yes, I have a number of people. Robert Moschello.
Okay.
Michael Kovacs.
Okay.
Annie Hindenlang.
Okay.
Susan Brody.
All right.
And Daniel Grommen.
I don't have a Daniel on there. Steven Pearlman, Susan Brody. Did I miss anybody?
I don't think so.
We can start, I guess. Didn't you say Susan Brody was someone you needed to be brought in?
Yes.
I thought I tried to bring her in. And then what about Mike Kovacs? I don't have a Mike Kovacs on here.
He's not here.
You brought him in. I see Mike Kovacs.
Okay. I thought you said one other name, though.
Susan Brody. I did say Daniel Grommen, but if he's not available, I just need Susan Brody then.
Okay, perfect. Are we ready, Brian?
Yeah. Yeah, I got my plans up here on my other screen. I'm good.
Has Ms. Brody been brought in? I just can't see her on my screen, that's why.
I keep bringing her in, and I don't know why she's not coming in.
Did you mean, yeah. Now we're hearing case number SP-1099, Monmouth Solar One LLC.
And I do see that Daniel Grommen too now. I just got him. Yeah. Susan Brody is on here twice now. I don't know if she's having trouble.
Perfect. I see everyone.
Okay. Counselor?
Okay.
Board adjourned.
Good evening, members of the Board, professionals. My name is Grace Chun of Grommen and Miranda. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Monmouth Solar One LLC. Before you tonight is the applicant's application for preliminary and final major site plan approval and associated design waivers and variances for a proposed solar project that's going to be located on the property at 2921 Lakewood Allenwood Road and identified on the official tax max of the township as Block 42, Lots 93, 93.01, 94, and 94.01. These sites are owned by the County of Monmouth and is the former site of a now-closed landfill. The properties are located in the ARE6 Agricultural Rural Estate Zone. We do have several people with us today to testify in support of the application tonight. We have our engineer, Rob Moschello of Gladstone Design. We have our environmental consultant, Michael Kovacs from Equal Sciences. We have our planner, Annie Hindenlang from Topology. And we also have two representatives from the applicant with us tonight. This application was actually carried from the April 28th hearing. Notice of that hearing was sent to the owners of the properties identified on the certified tax list, provided by the tax assessor, along with the township clerk and all applicable utilities. That was sent via certified mail on April 14th, and it was published in the Asbury Park Press on April 18th, 2022. An affidavit of service was mailed to the Board on April 22nd, and our office received confirmation that delivery had been made. I believe these actions satisfactorily accomplished service in this matter and that the jurisdiction is properly before this Board. I actually don't have any more housekeeping matters unless the Board has any questions for me that I need to address. I'm actually ready to bring on my first witness.
Steve, you concur? We're in order.
Yes, we are.
Okay, thank you. Please proceed.
Sure. Our first witness is going to be Mr. Rob Moschello.
Evening.
Hi, Mr. Moschello. We're going to swear you in. Please raise your right hand. Mr. Moschello, do you swear affirm that the testimony provided before the Board this evening will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Can you please state and spell your name for the record and give us your business address?
Sure. It's Robert Moschello, spelled M-O-S-C-H-E-L-L-O, and the business address is 265 Main Street, Gladstone, New Jersey, 07934.
Thank you very much.
Great.
Mr. Moschello, could you please briefly describe your educational and its professional background, identify any licenses or certifications that you hold, and state whether your licenses are in good standing, and generally state your qualifications.
Yes. So I received my Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from NGIT in 1998. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I received my license in 2004. I've appeared before probably over 100 boards now within the state of New Jersey as an expert in the field of civil engineering. Our firm works on land use projects ranging from residential to commercial, to solar, to hotel hospitality, golf courses, and basically run the gamut of site development. We've probably worked on now almost, I'll say, a half a gigawatt of solar throughout the state of New Jersey, and this is just another one of the solar projects that we're working on in the state right now.
Thank you. We'll accept your credentials.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Moschello, could you please introduce the site, provide an overview of the project, and describe the types of approvals?
I think just for some housekeeping purposes, there was an exhibit list that was shared around prior to the hearing for my exhibits that I'm going to put up. Should I refer to the numbers on that list, or should I enter them as new exhibits?
No, you can use those numbers. That is a good exhibit list.
All right, great. Perfect. Just wanted to make sure first before I get started. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen with everyone here. And just let me know if you all can see that.
Yeah.
And now.
Thank you.
Okay, great. So the first exhibit that I have up here, and this will be referred to as A13 for the record, it's entitled Aerial Exhibit, and it's dated, it was dated April 28th, 2022. What we're looking at here is basically the 2020 state aerial for the surrounding area of the project site for reference purposes. North is up on the plan, and just to orient the Board and everyone is to the location of the project. Lakewood Allenwood Road basically runs in a northeast to southwest direction on the bottom side of this plan for reference purposes. And the project site itself, as you can see here, is outlined in yellow on the map. As Ms. Chun referred to it, it is Block 42, Lots 93, 93.01, 94, and 94.01. It's comprised of 238.99 acres. The property is essentially bounded by, as you can see from the aerial mapping here, various residential development and open space around the project site from, starting on the east side, you've got wooded areas and residential. Then on the south side, you've got some additional, some small residential. On the west side, there's large lot residential, and then on the north side, there's also some large lot residential and commercial, coupled with actually an existing solar facility just to the northwest of the project site. The site's located in your ARE6 Zone, which is your agricultural estate Zone 6. And that's actually the site itself plus the property to the northeast, northwest, I'm sorry, it's also in your ARE6 Zone. It's also bounded by your ARE2 Zone to the southwest and south of the project site, and then your AREC Zone and AREW Zone to the east of the project site itself. Going to move on to our next exhibit. Just give it a moment to load. Great. Okay. Actually, the next two exhibit sheets are comparable. I'm going to enter them as A14 and A15 for the record. They're the environmental constraints, Exhibit A and B. They're also dated April 28th, 2022. We use these to explain the existing features of the property. This actually, this view's been reoriented, so north for everyone is facing the left side of the plan here, and Lakewood Allenwood Road is now running in an up-and-down direction on the plan sheet. It's still east to west, but it's on the right side of the plan now for reference purposes. We split the view into two portions of the site. This site is basically the primary portion of the landfill itself, and I just want to go through some of the existing features on the property. This was a solid waste landfill. It was decommissioned and capped back in the 1990s. The cap consists of a three-foot soil cap on top of an impermeable liner that basically represents the landfill portion of the site, which is this dark dashed black line on the plan here represents the landfill cap portion of the landfill. It goes all around the site here where the waste is capped. The site itself is bordered by a series of streams. The Sandy Hill Brook is on the east side of the site. The Muddy Ford Brook is on the west side of the site, and then there's also the Grouse Brook and the Woodcock Brook as well. That's more to the north of the site, and we'll see that on the next sheet when I bring that up. As you can see from the map here, there's topography on the site such that the site is both moderately sloping on top of the landfill cap itself to more steeply sloping on the landfill sides. The gray shades that you see on here are the steeper slopes on the project site. That's 15% in greater slopes, generally related to the mound of the landfill itself and the side slopes of the landfill, where the top of it is generally flat, except for a few areas where the topography changes there. And the grading of the site goes from a high of about 90 in the middle of the site down to an elevation of about 40 along Lakewood Allenwood Road. So it's a decent amount of grade change on the property. Approximately 52 acres of the 238-acre site is dedicated to the landfill proper itself, that that's part of the landfill. The rest of it is wooded area surrounding the property and has a series of environmental constraints I'll get into momentarily. There's also two structures on the property. There's one down by the main entrance where my pointer is. That's a maintenance shed that's utilized by the county for the property. And then there's also a pump house where my pointer is for the landfill system that's here for collecting some leachate from the landfill itself. But that's part of the landfill operations, and they're not being affected by the solar application. The landfill itself has a series of gravel roads or drives that access the landfill. When you come in off of Lakewood Allenwood Road, there's a gate there with a paved apron, and you come into the site, and there's a series of gravel drives that go around both over the top of the landfill, where my pointer is here on the plan. And then there's a loop road that goes around the entire outer perimeter of the landfill itself for access purposes in and around the site. And that loop road varies from anywhere from 12 to 20 feet in width. It's primarily gravel, and it's stabilized, it can be driven upon, and the county utilizes that access road now for getting into the landfill. As I mentioned, there are environmental constraints on the property. We have a series of streams. They're all classified as C1 streams, and therefore they have riparian buffers associated with them. Those riparian buffers are 300-foot riparian buffers in accordance with the DEP regulations. And those riparian buffers on the plan here are shown in purple, this purple line that comes down on the east side, and then... And then turns around and travels back up on the west side. That represents the repairium buffer. From the streams, you can also see it on the west side of the Muddy Ford Brook as well, and on the north side of the Grouse Brook. Those lines have been verified by the NJDEP. We submitted for a verification and they confirmed those lines. There's also flood plains on the subject property related to the, the brooks. And we, because there were no state mapping or FEMA mapping associated with the flood plain lines, we utilized the NJDEP Method 5, which was the approximate method to delineate the flood plains. Because of the elevation of the landfill, we really weren't impacting them, but we utilized Method 5 to delineate them, and that's the orange lines you see on the plan here on both sides of the Sandy Hill Brook. And then on the other side of the Muddy Ford Brook, this orange line, which represents the flood hazard area.
So Rob, can I, can I just ask you to take a half a second because Eileen is got kicked out and she needs to start. So I'm not 100% sure if we're all going to get kicked out. But can you just give her a minute to try to reboot herself?
Well, sure, yes. While I was waiting before my internet kicked off on me, I was worried I was going to get back on. Yeah, not a problem.
Yeah, I don't see her anymore, which is weird since she's the host. So it's a little unusual.
Yeah, that is.
Jen, at one point it came up that said you're now the host across my screen.
Okay, let me be very clear. That's not in my job description, but.
She's coming back.
She is, thank God. It's like, there's no way that, that I'm going to be bringing people in and out. That's just, you know. And my teenagers are out, so like they can't even help me.
You're muted.
You did.
You're muted, Eileen. Give us a thumbs down if you're having audio problems and you can hear us.
I can't even see her.
Okay. I can see her. I had to expand the, the group to see everybody. Okay. Well, as long as you can hear us.
Are you okay?
As long as you can hear us and we're recording, can we continue? Give us a thumbs up.
All right, good.
Thank you.
All right, I'm sorry for interrupting.
Oh, no, not at all. Do I need to go back and reiterate anything or everyone's good up to this point?
So I guess, I guess, Mr. Chair, we just asked, maybe you just ask the board members whether they've heard the entirety of the testimony thus far?
Did anybody get kicked off? I know I heard the entire testimony.
Nope, I heard everything.
I heard it all.
Yeah, I did too.
I did too.
Okay.
Eileen is raising her hand.
Yeah, are you okay over there? Said no. I can hear you.
I think Bob Moschello has to stop sharing the screen for a minute.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because Nick is in the audience, but I can't get to him and.
Okay.
I mean, I know, I feel very honored that you made me the temporary host, but I don't know how to move people in from the, from the attendees to the panelists, so.
I, I can't.
Oh, she, she's frozen.
Can you get, can you get Nick in?
I can't do anything. The screen is still showing the constraint map. I'm not.
Like, I can see all of you guys.
Tonight.
I stopped sharing. Yeah, I can see everyone here too.
Laura, you know how to do that? You know how to move people in and out? Eileen, can you make Laura the host?
Sure, Laura, you could be the host tonight. Go on.
Oh boy.
Agreed. The pressure's on.
Yeah. Oh, here he comes.
There we go. We had Nick in.
All right, so I don't know if this is a good place to stop if you want to take care of Todd or you want to keep going, but I missed.
We could probably bang Todd out pretty quick, right, Laura?
Yeah.
Hi, Nick.
Hey, sorry I was late. Had a ball game.
Don't worry, don't worry.
All right, to let the record reflect that Mr. Husser has joined us at 7:37.
Okay. Ms. Chun, can you, let's, let's complete the testimony of Mr. Moschello?
Okay.
And then we'll just put you on a brief hold, bring Mr. Cohen in, take care of that, that, that design waiver real quick and then come back.
Not a problem.
Okay.
Right. I guess, am I okay to continue?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'm going to go back and start sharing my screen again.
Thank you.
Give me one second here. All right, can everybody see that?
Yes.
All right, excellent. So I think I was talking about the flood hazard lines that were shown on the plan. Those are shown in orange here and were delineated and verified by the NJDEP. The, there's also on this property freshwater wetlands. They're shown on the map here in actually two different shades of, actually no, in shade, in the shade of green. And that's the, the solid green shade you see on the plan here. There's wetlands associated with the, the streams, both on the, the east side and west side and north side of the landfill cap. And there's also wetlands that are actually on top of the cap as well, and, and, and those are, those wetlands on top of the cap are ordinary resource value. They do not have any buffers associated with them. And they're just basically in regards to the, the way the grading of the cap is, there's low-lying areas on the cap and drainage swells, and I'll talk about that in a moment, that have, have, have some wetlands that have formed in them. The wetlands.
Can I just ask you a question? Do you comply with all the requisite environmental regulations, DEP, et cetera, with your proposal?
Yes, yes, we do.
Okay, so how about we just get to the proposal?
I'll be more than happy.
There's a lot of background going on here and like, let's just get to it.
All right, that is, that is fine with me. I will move forward. I just, I do want to point out one thing, Ms. Beam, if I can please, is the stormwater management system that's on the site, and then I'll jump right into the solar. It's related to the solar facility itself. So just in terms of the landfill cap, I mentioned there's a series of drainage swales that go around, around the perimeter of the cap. Those swales collect the runoff that comes from the top of the cap. Keep in mind, the cap itself is, is three feet of soil with an impermeable liner underneath. So there's no infiltration that goes into the ground. So those swales collect the runoff from, from the top of the cap and they direct that runoff to the two ponds, the one on the north side and the one on the south side of the plan through both swales. And if you look here on the plan, there's actual pipes as well that convey the water into those ponds, and that's the stormwater collection system that's for the landfill cap itself. So all the water that lands on the cap goes into one of those two ponds from a stormwater management perspective before it's discharged into the, into the streams. So with that being said, I will move along to what is going to be considered Exhibit A18 and A19 for the purposes of tonight's application, and that's called, and those are entitled Site Plan Rendering A and Site Plan Rendering B, and they're both dated April 28th, 2022 for the record. So again, with north being on, on the left side of the plan, Lakewood Allenwood Road on the south. What we are proposing to do here is install a solar facility on top of the landfill cap. And just to give you some numbers of what that facility consists of. It is, it's main components are approximately 38,100 solar panels that are going to be in a series of tables on top of the cap that support the panels. And I do want to point out that the original application that was submitted to the board had 39,150 panels. But we've made our application to DEP and they asked us to make some modifications and we slightly reduced the number of panels. So we're, we're down to 38,106 panels on, on the, on the project, which is approximately 19 megawatts of power that's being generated by this facility. And it's a, what we call a grid connect facility, meaning that it's connected directly into the, the power grid. It's not a behind-the-meter facility that's for a particular end user. The power that's generated from this goes directly into the grid. And it's not for a, a, a building that, that's, that needs power for, for generation purposes. And I'll talk about the interconnect in a little bit. The facility, the solar facility itself is comprised of a series of components. Just real quick, because this is a landfill project, we can't embed posts into the ground to support the solar panels. We have to put them on what we call ballast blocks. The ballast blocks are basically tubs that are filled with concrete and placed on the ground, and then from there, we would install the racking system on top of those blocks. And if you, if I zoom into the plan here, you can see what I'm, I'm talking about. We have a series of circles which represent the ballast blocks or tubs. And there's, you know, two for every approximately five, 10 panels. And those ballast blocks have concrete in them and they, and they provide the support for the panels because we can't embed the columns into the ground.
Excuse me, Mr. Moschello, is that going to be the same for all the other components such as the electrical wiring and so forth? All of it's going to be, be located above the ground?
Essentially it is, except for one part of the electrical system where we're going to directional drill under the stream corridor. And that, that'll be buried. But for everything else that's on top of the landfill cap, the ballast blocks, and if you look on the plan here, we have a series of utility pads that once the cabling is connected from the panels to that utility pad, and, and they're located throughout the project site. There's one here, one here. We have a series of what we call cable trays, Mr. Chairman, that the cables are running on above the surface of the ground, and there, there's small blocks, small ballast blocks that support those cable trays. And basically, everything is connected.
And I'm sorry, I don't mean to derail your, your, your meditation, but is it fair to say that the directional drilling where you're going to do that will be outside of the, the contaminated area of the, the garbage area, you know?
Correct. So once we, once we get to the last pad here, we come down the slope to the access road that's adjacent to what we're calling a jack and bore pit, which would be ultimately be a utility manhole. And I'm just going to switch to our next exhibit, which was A. I'll say 17 to show the board. So from that utility manhole, because we have environmentally constrained lands here, we're going to jack and bore approximately 1,300 feet. And that's not through the contaminated area. That's through regular soil to a receiving pit on the far side of the project site adjacent to, there's a JCPNL utility right-of-way that's on the property that has high-power transmission lines there and utility lines. And we're connecting into those smaller utility lines that are adjacent to the high-power lines that, that are, that are in that easement, and that's our interconnection point for the project.
Okay, and one last question. All, all of your ballasting and so forth will make sure that none of this stuff starts flying during a hurricane? And you meet all of the, all of the, the state's building code requirements for wind loads and so forth?
Correct. The ballast blocks are designed so that this way there's no uplift of the system in, in, in wind conditions and, and therefore it meets, I think, I want to say it was either 90 or 110 mile an hour wind gust, but that's, that's part of the when the application is made to the building department for the, for the building permits, those calculations will be provided for that, for, for, for that type of design. But yes, the ballast blocks are designed to prevent uplift of the system and to support it on the, on the landfill cap.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Great. So moving forward, you know, basically that's the, the layout of the system, and I'll go back to A 16, just to point out, that's, that's the general layout of the system. As you can see, it's basically broken down into, give it a second to reload there, segments or sections of, of solar panels. That's based on both the topography of the landfill cap as well as the access drives that are on the cap itself. So the main access drive that comes up through the middle of the solar facility, we're maintaining that access drive. So you can get to the facility and maintain it. It's a gravel drive. It exists today, and we're also maintaining the existing gravel roads around the site. We're not modifying those at all from an access perspective.
How's the wires going across the gravel?
What, what they do is they put a, they basically put a concrete, almost looks like a small concrete trench drain, and they just raise that portion of the road up. It looks like a big speed bump, but it's like a ramp. And that goes, and that goes over the cable tray and it's, it's sitting on, on the ground. And you could drive over that with construction equipment and, and, and even emergency services vehicles can drive over that if, if, if they, if they need to.
Thank you.
In terms of, I'll, I'll go right into fencing. The landfill facility itself is fenced in. So we're not proposing any fencing around the, around the solar facility itself. There is a main gate at the entrance into the site that's gated already by the county. I believe there was a comment in one of the fire official review letters about putting a Knox box or a lot so that this way the emergency services personnel has access to the site. When the county's not there, we can certainly, you know, coordinate that and make that, make that be the case. In terms of, I talked about the interconnection already. In terms of just additional items related to the sole facility, routine maintenance and grass mowing of the facility, that usually occurs every four to five weeks. This is a, a, a remote monitored facility. There's no, there's nobody out here on a daily basis to operate the solar facility. It's remotely monitored. Therefore, if there's an issue, it'll be alerted remotely and they'll send a technician out to address it. So there's, there's nobody here on a daily basis to, to, to operate it. In terms of, in terms of excavation, other than the directional boring that I spoke about and the manholes for that, there's really no regrading occurring on the site. We're not changing the landfill cap itself or the drainage patterns on the landfill cap. Everything's remaining essentially as it is. We're basically placing the entire system on top of the landfill cap. So, so it can be there in, in conjunction with, with the actual landfill cap itself. A, I think there was a comment about a decommissioning plan, and so we'll certainly provide one of those for the solar facility. Should the board act favorably upon the application, so this way, at the end of the facility's useful life, there's a, there's a procedure in place to have the facility removed from the site and restore or restore any areas that were disturbed from, from the, from the facility. In terms of stormwater management, I talked already about the two ponds that are on the site, that, that managed runoff from the site. We prepared an extensive stormwater manager report that was submitted to the township as well as to the NJDEP. The NJDEP reviewed the report and our calculations that were provided in there as, as well as the township, and we showed that the facility will not have an adverse impact on stormwater runoff from the, from, from the site. We did, I'll talk about third-party permits at the end. In terms of site lighting, there's no lighting proposed for the facility. There's, there's the utility, we only have utility pads with transformers and inverters. There's no lighting proposed for the facility. In terms of landscaping and tree removal, I'd like to move on to my exhibit. A, make sure I have the number right here. I believe it's A20. And this is entitled Tree Replacement Exhibit dated April 28th, 2022. Because of our interconnection point on the northern side of the site, we have to remove 54 trees from, from the project site to construct the utility poles and the interconnection. Then we provided a plan to, to the township that shows those trees that were surveyed. And, and because of that, we have to provide replacement trees in accordance with your, with your ordinance. Therefore, what we are proposing to do is along the, I'll call it the eastern slope of the subject site, and that's the slope that's probably closest to any structures along Lakewood Allenwood Road. And back in early April, we met out on the site with Shari Spiro from CME, and we walked the this, this side of the property with her and looked at the existing vegetation that's out there today and determined that since we have to provide replacement trees along this slope would be the most ideal location for those trees to fill in a couple of areas on the slope that may be devoid of some, some wooded vegetation. So this plan represents 28 deciduous trees and 70 evergreen trees that we would look to plant in this area that would just enhance that, that, that vegetation over time. This facility is really not visible from, from, from off-site and nor is the residential development in and around the area. You can't see it from the top of the mound, so if we can't see them, they really can't see us, and the panels are only about eight to nine foot high. So again, based on the elevations and the locations, there really is no visibility of the facility. But nonetheless, we felt that providing landscaping along here based on the site visit would be beneficial to enhancing the, the screening that's out there. And we think that satisfies your, your ordinance for providing buffers and screening in accordance with your, your ordinance requirements.
Well, before we go farther, so the buffer, are you providing an undisturbed 50-foot buffer around the entirety of the perimeter of the site?
Yes, since we're not this, except for, I should point out, the, we are except for the one location, and I'll go back to my A17 exhibit. We do have to put the interconnection. Actually, that's next to the easement, so correct. We are not disturbing the outer, the outer perimeter of the project site. I apologize. That's not the property.
So there's no grading, no roadway circulation, no fencing? Because I'm looking at a plan, it may be an older plan, I apologize if that's the case, that shows a fence that's within 50 feet of the property line.
That would be an existing fence that would be out there.
Right, so now that you're here and you're surrounded by residential development, I would like that to be removed. I would like that to be removed. And if there's any fencing that's going to be placed, it's going to be placed beyond fifty feet in accordance with section sixty-three of our ordinance.
The only question I say to that is if the fence is part of the county's, um, I'll say fencing for the, for the perimeter of the landfill. And I think that might be where the existing gravel road is. So it might be difficult to, to move that fence. I think the area you're talking about might be right in here on the
So, so this application then would not be compliant with the buffers that you would need a variance for buffer relief along that property line.
Even though it's an existing.
Doesn't matter.
Okay.
So that's not an order, that's not a variance that this board grants lightly at all. Um, and quite honestly, it's something that can be mitigated through this application that, that roadway and the fencing can be moved out of the buffer. You have more than enough room um, interior of, of the site. So, you know, it's not really something that I would support. There's really no justification to leave it. Um, so I would be looking for you to be compliant. And I do think that we discussed this when you guys came for a TRC, that I take the buffers very seriously and you have a two hundred plus acre site completely surrounded by residential. I think that that should be taken more seriously.
I certainly understand your, your concern. However, looking at that road, we do have a s- a, a slope here. And I'm going to zoom in on the plan um, from the landfill itself. So to move that over, we would be impacting the, the, the slope of, of, of the landfill. And again, this is an existing, um, you know, landfill cap that's out there and, and, and slopes. So to, to move that would, would, could be problematic with the, with the landfill that's in place today and, and
Based upon your current design.
Well, it's, it's, it, it doesn't, it doesn't affect
Respectfully, you could cut it farther inside and eliminate some panels.
Wait, this has, no, this, this, this gravel drive here has no, has nothing to do with the panels because the panels are on top of the landfill cap.
So respectfully, you're here for a application which requires relief from this requirement. So you have a two hundred plus acre site. There's a way to mitigate, so there's a, there's a way to mitigate this buffer for the residential development that's immediately around this property. So, uh, you know, I mean, ultimately it's up to the board, but I can represent to the board that there's a way to make this compliant without continuing to have intrusions into the buffer. You know, in addition, you also need a variance because you don't have any of the, you know, you need two of the four items in terms of treating the buffer, which you also don't have. So there's two variances associated with the buffer. So the reason I'm jumping in is because there was a statement earlier that, you know, these trees that you're planting on this other side, you know, satisfies the buffers. And I would submit that it does not. And I don't know what goal of zoning you're advancing by not complying. So it's something that, you know, I, I'm looking for compliance. Ultimately, the board, it's up to the board to decide what they want to do. But if they were to ask me my opinion, my opinion is that you have room to, to figure out a way to comply.
I certainly understand your, your concern. I think what we'd like to at least do here is at least give us a, 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 we'll let us go through the rest of our um, consultants and our testimony. And we'll come back and maybe address this um, towards the end. We do have a planner here, so.
Fair enough.
She, she, she can to talk to this as well. Um, and also I'll get some more information on that side of the site um, to discuss that. Okay, regards to that, in regards to this area.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Okay. Um, and then I guess moving on to just some other um, items I was talking about. Um, um, maintenance and um, mowing of, of the cap. I think I touched on that already. Um, we also had um, discussions with um, the Freehold Soil Conservation District and, and the Department of Agriculture. There were some review letters from them. We spoke to them about um, reestablishment of um, vegetation on the landfill cap um, after construction's completed. Um, there will be construction vehicles, of course, driving um, up and down the various rows here to, to construct the panels. Um, and we do have to maintain the vegetation on the top of the cap. So there will be the need to do some, I'll say um, overseeding of, of, of the landfill cap. Once, once the construction is, is completed and also to maintain um, and not over compact soils a- as well. So we'll be, we'll be providing some responses to their comments as well as adding some additional notes to the plans um, should the board act favorably upon the uh, the, the application. Um, I also want to talk, just mention, there's no construction phasing really associated with the project. The intent here is to, is to construct the entire project all at one time. However, um, it, it is kind of like an erector set, if you will, in terms of building it. You start with the tubs or the blocks and you move on to the, then you move on to the, this, the racking and then the panels and the wiring. So it, it, there is a process, but we're going to build it all, all at one time. Um, then I think going to just the last part of, of my testimony, uh, Mr. Chairman, was just going to touch on some of the design waivers and, and well, at the time we felt that we didn't have any, uh, we only had one variance we were asking for, which had to do with um, signage. And I just want to point out that while we were asking for a site identification sign that was fifteen square feet in size, we're, we're going to remove that request from the application and just provide the necessary um, co- uh, high voltage signage as required by code. And then we'll have a small two-square-foot um, contact sign out at the main um, gate for um, emergency contacts for the project that'll be out there at the front gate. Um, should, should that be a needed, we'll take, but we're going to remove the fifteen-square-foot identification sign and the variance request associated with that um, for the, for the project. Um, lastly, there was, there's a couple of design waivers that I, I do want to touch on um, here um, through my testimony. Um, and, and they were um, outlined in um, the review letters that were provided to us. Um, the first one is in regards to section one eighty-eight dash one oh six F one A. And this is a design waiver related to the thirty-foot wide circula- a thirty-foot wide circulation aisle around the, the site for emergency purposes. Um, this site's an existing landfill site. As I mentioned, there's existing gravel drives already. They vary from between twelve and twenty feet um, on the site. And we're asking to maintain the existing drives that are out there now and not have to increase them in size. Um, they do go through environmentally um, sensitive areas around the perimeter. Um, and, and the, the current width is adequate for access to the site and, and to the facility. Um, so we're asking the board um, to, to let us maintain um, tho- those, those widths as they are out there today.
What would be, what would be, what would be the reason to make them wider? Is there an emergency vehicle access requirement, Ms. Beam? Ms. Newman, is, is there anything that, that would prohibit or require the board to request those, those roads to be widened?
No, um, I don't think so at all. Um, and as long as we don't have comments that state it's necessary for emergency purposes, I don't think it's necessary. And I think the deviation, given how this site is going to be maintained and accessed, is appropriate.
Thank, thank you. I appreciate that.
Um, the next one is from section one eighty-eight dash one oh six F two. And this one is for areas that are likely to experience light traffic shall be paved. I think it's the same reason that we noted for the widths of the driveways. Um, while these gravel drives experience light traffic, it's really only maintenance vehicles and the construction vehicles that are going to be on site. No, no public um, is, is accessing this, this site for any particular reason. So again, we'd like to maintain and leave them as gravel. Um, except of course, the, the entrance, the paved apron at the main entrance, that's paved and that's going to remain as paved. But everything else we'd like to leave as, as gravel here on site. Um, then from section one eighty-eight dash one oh seven C, this is for the minimum number of parking spaces for utility uses is one space. This is a utility use, so it will require one space. However, um, there is an existing maintenance building. And when you come in off the site, there's, there's adequate um, grass and gravel area for a vehicle to pull off. Um, should they, they need to do that for, for a parking purposes? There's no, I don't, we don't see the need to have to designate an actual nine-by-eighteen parking space on the site for, 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 um, for maintenance purposes here. Um, then the last section is actually two more sections. Um, one eighty-eight, there's two twenty-five G one um, that we're asking to request a waiver from the board to install a sidewalk along the project frontage. Um, we understand that at this time, there's no sidewalks out there. So um, based on the review letters, there's a contribution that would be required um, in lieu of constructing a sidewalk. So we're asking that the board um, waive the um, the, the, the requirement to install the sidewalk and, and pay. And we would at, request to pay into the fund um, for a future sidewalk that the township may wish to install um, along the frontage. And then lastly, there was a comment in one of the review letters about um, conservation easements. I believe it's from section one eighty-eight dash one twenty-seven of your code um, requesting conservation easements over um, the, the um, environmentally constrained areas. Um, we, we also would request um, a, a waiver from that requirement. Um, given that the, the land is owned by the county and the environmental constrained areas include not only the streams, but also portions of the uh, the landfill cap itself. And, and, and therefore we would request that um, we would not be required to provide conservation easements um, over portions of the land since it's already um, restricted by the DEP and the, and the landfill is already owned by a public entity, which is the uh, which is the county um, in terms of, in terms of the, the property itself. Um, those are the design waivers um, that, that I have listed here. And then of course, the, the, the plan, as she brought up, the issue of the um, of the buffer on the northern portion of the site. And we'll come back and, and, and address that um, in, in, in a little bit of later testimony.
Thank you.
Um, great. Last, I was gonna say, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I was gonna just point out that in terms of our third-party approvals, we do have Monmouth County Planning Board approval that was received. Um, we do, um, we are, Freehold Soil Conservation District approval is pending. Um, depend, depending on the outcome of the, of, of the approval process with the township, we would address their comments. We do have NJDEP, a flood hazard area verification for the riparian zones and the flood plains. We also have the NJDEP flood hazard area permit for the work related to the directional drilling and the manhole and the um, stormwater management system on site. Our New Jersey Freshwater Wetlands General Permit for the what, for the disturbance of the wetlands on top of the cap for the solar panels and the ballast blocks, that's still pending at the DEP. Our RML consultant can speak to that. And depending on the outcome, of course, of the hearing, um, we would then file with the NJDEP Solid Waste Division for the post-closure landfill modification to have solar on top of the landfill cap.
Thank you. Does that conclude your testimony?
Yes, it does, Mr. Chairman.
Do our professionals have any comments on any of the design waivers?
No, Mr. Chairman, but I do have a couple of questions and I'm not sure if I missed it. Will these lots be consolidated?
Uh, we were not proposing to consolidate the lots since it's, it's the underlying land was owned by the uh, the county. But I'll defer that to our attorney, Ms. Chung, to, to, to address.
So it got access to the poles and equipment at the rear in the JCPNL easement?
So I can actually address that, that issue. Um, so there's an existing right-of-way that runs adjacent to the pole locations. Those poles are actually going to be installed and owned by the utility. Um, ultimately, those poles and that entire cleared area, it's going to be included in an easement that's going to be conveyed to the utility. And it's going to provide the utility with ongoing direct access to the poles, like in that existing right-of-way. Um, we, I should say, the applicant actually anticipates executing what's called an interconnection agreement with uh, the utility. Um, that is anticipated um, to allow the applicant to get access to that existing JCPNL right-of-way for the purposes of accessing that rear portion of the property um, for tree clearing and for the utility pole installation. Um, the interconnection agreement, the process in order to get that uh, signed, it's actually really long. Um, it's my understanding that, you know, the agreement is executed after the utility conducts a number of studies to determine what they need to do to upgrade the grid to accept um, the, the power coming from the solar. The process takes about two to three years. We're already in the queue. Um, we anticipate entering into that agreement by the end of this year. Um, so with that agreement, we should be getting access to that rear portion of the property. So that's a long-winded explanation, but we should be getting that through that agreement.
And Mr. Chairman, just if Mr. Michelle can confirm that we used to comply with the technical items in our report with the exception of the conservation easement, if the board saw fit to grant that relief.
I'm sorry. Yes, I, I meant to cover that. Yes, we can, we can comply with those comments, provide the additional details that you requested and, and the other items that are, that are in there.
So Mr. Chairman, that I have nothing further for the end of the year.
Okay. Thank you very much. Ms. Beam, you just unmuted yourself. You got a comment?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Spiro, you're okay with the, the trees? It seems like they're adding more than they're taking out. Is that a fair statement?
It's based on the uh, calculations required by the ordinance.
Got it.
But yes, we, we walk the site. It, it, it is very dense. Uh, so they'll, they'll have to be field-located to put in those trees so that, that should fill in any gaps.
Fair enough. Thank you. Hey, thank you, Mr. Michelle. Ms. Chung, we're gonna stop your application for a minute here. Thank you, Mr. Cohen. I'm gonna recuse myself and then we're gonna come back. Vice Chair, you're up.
All right. Well, I joined late, so I'm not sure which one we're doing right now.
Oh, Nick, we're doing, we're doing the Fred Hare application, the submission waivers?
Got it. All right. Submission waiver, case number S D three zero zero two Frederick J. Hare for a minor subdivision with ancillary variance relief. And Todd, I'm assuming you're the attorney on this one?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Todd Cohen for the applicant Fred Hare. I had the opportunity to speak with Laura this afternoon regarding the requested waivers. We have agreed to provide uh, two of the waivers, uh, items ten and seventy-five. I believe Laura could sum that up very quickly.
I need to be re-.
No, well, Laura, you were sworn once. That covers you for the whole meeting.
I love it. Okay. Yes, Mr. Chairman, as was indicated by Mr. Cohen, we spoke earlier today. This is a minor subdivision. Uh, one lot will retain existing uh, improvements. One lot is proposed for future residential development, but no improvements at this time. Having said that, with the submission of the county application, outbound survey, I take no exception to the other waivers as outlined in our report being granted for the purposes of deeming the application complete.
Thanks, Laura. Board members, any questions? Todd, anything further?
No, that's fine.
Okay. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Thanks, Paul. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Eileen, are you able to do a roll call?
I hope I can get through it. Pull up a V.I.
Yes.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Ms. Talente?
Yes.
And Chairman Husser?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much and thank you for squeezing me in. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Todd. Have a good night. I guess somebody messaged Brian. I guess he's allowed back in now.
You guys are done?
Yes, Brian.
Quick one, Brian.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Husser, I, you were uh, here for the beginning, but the Mr. Hammer application is being uh, carried. He's not, he's not ready at this particular time.
Did we, uh, did we already go through the Howell Township one?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, this is the only, this is the, the, the only application we got left. Ms. Chung? Laura, yours?
Thank you. Um, so I want to call my next witness, Michael Kovacs.
Mr. Kovacs, we're gonna swear you in. Could please raise your hand. Mr. Kovacs, do you swear from the testimony you provided for planning board this evening will be the truth?
I do.
Can you please state and spell your name and give us your business address for the record?
Michael Kovacs. That's K O V A C S. And my business address is seventy-five Fleetwood Drive in Rockaway, New Jersey, zero seven eight six six.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Kovacs, could you just briefly uh, describe your professional and educational background for the board? Um, let the board know if you have any licenses or certifications and state your qualifications generally.
Yes, um, I'm a senior vice president with Eco Sciences. And I have a bachelor of science degree from uh, in natural resource management from Rutgers University. I have over forty years of experience in the environmental consulting field. I am a certified, I am certified as a senior professional wetland scientist by the Society of Wetland Scientists. And I am also qualified as an ornithologist by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. I have prepared hundreds of environmental assessments for projects throughout New Jersey. And I have performed over a thousand wetland delineations throughout New Jersey. I have testified, testified before many municipal boards in New Jersey. I have testified before many municipal boards in New Jersey and have been accepted as an expert in the field of environmental science.
What's an orphanologist? What that?
Birds.
Thank you.
Yes, it's certain, certain applications, but from the DEP requires someone to be a qualified ornithologist.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate you. We'll accept your credentials.
Thank you.
Mr. Kovacs, for the benefit of the board, could you please describe the project as it pertains to the disturbances in the wetlands and the riparian buffer?
Yes. Actually, a lot of this, this information was already detailed by Rob Michello, but I'll go through it again. And if I get into too much detail, I apologize.
So again, Mr. Chairman, I don't know that the board wants to rehear testimony. So perhaps maybe if the board has questions, given the environmental testimony heard, we can ask further questions. I know Jen, Assistant Mr. Michello, there was an indication that they were going to be compliant with all regulations. We've heard what they need to do with the cap. I don't know that we want to regurgitate testimony. I would defer to the board, but I certainly think it's fair for the board to ask any witness, questions of this witness that they may have. We need to rehear information.
Thank you, Ms. Newman. Would this witness be appropriate to provide testimony about the buffer that Ms. Bean brought up?
No, Mr. Chairman, that would be the planner.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I just wanted to clarify because we did receive comments from the board's professionals with respect to things affecting the wetlands and the riparian buffer. So if the board is okay.
A waiver. Your engineer agreed to comply with the comments in our, you requested a waiver of the, I mean, I'll defer to you. It's your case. I just think to rehear testimony is maybe not good use of the, and that's all.
I am absolutely agreeing with you. I just wanted to make sure that the board is aware that we did submit an environmental impact report. There was some comments with respect to things affecting the riparian zones and the wetlands. So if the board has specific questions, you know, I submit this witness for questions.
Okay. In regards to those, Ms. Newman, are you saying that their engineer already agreed to comply with all of those requirements? And those, those issues are no longer, no longer applicable?
That is correct. Our technical comment regarding the environmental impact had to do with the DEP permits and asking that that documentation be provided upon approval from the DEP. That's in our technical reporting. It was agreed to by Mr. Michello.
Okay, thank you. That takes care of that. Mr. Kovacs, I mean, in your opinion, in summary, is there any, is there any environmental, because you're here for environmental sensitivities, correct?
Correct, yes.
So in your opinion, is there any environmental sensitivity that we are disturbing or causing, causing any additional harm to the area by the proposed project?
No, I don't believe there is harm because, you know, most of the activities are on the capped landfill. There will be impacts to wetlands on top of the capped landfill. But basically, they, they developed due to poor grading and also the stormwater management facilities. The DEP has already let us know that those impacts would be acceptable from the ballasts of the, of the frames of the solar panels. The, the main crossing of the, the streams and also the riparian zones and the wetlands along Muddy Ford Brook. And that's going to be through horizontal drilling. And relative to wetlands rules, that's not even, that's not even regulated by the DEP because there's no impacts. And relative to the Flood Hazard Area Control Act, they already issued the permit for those activities.
Thank you.
I would think that, you know, as projects go, this has very little environmental impact relative to wetlands, flood hazard areas and buffers.
And in our notes, we didn't have any, any comments from our environmental commission, our liaison to our environmental commission, Vice Chair Husser. Do you have any, any comments? You're muted.
No, I had two questions. I apologize if I missed it earlier. One, I just want clarification on what the thickness of this landfill cap is. And two, being as there is wetland disturbance atop the landfill as a result of installing the panels, do you then have to restore the wetlands and do long-term monitoring on this to make sure that those wetland areas, you know, and all lessons come back?
No, we do not because the DEP has determined that these wetlands are ordinary resource value. They're isolated pockets. They're associated with stormwater swales. And so we're able to get these, these impacts under general permits, six for isolated wetlands and seven for swales. And we fall way under the one acre limitation of those permits. Actually, we're less than a half acre of the disturbance. And the DEP, based upon our recent correspondence, is about ready to issue those permits to us.
Satisfy your question, Professor? Thank you. Anybody else on the board have questions for this witness?
Well, Brian, just the, what is the thickness of this cap?
Ms. Chung, do you want to bring in Mr. Michello?
Michelle testified to that, but he's in.
I'm back. It's a three-foot thick cap that's up there, and there's an impermeable liner underneath that, three feet of soil.
And that's on the slopes as well?
It's on the top of the cap and then it goes to part of the slopes. I don't know how far down the slope it goes, but it's usually on the top of the cap is where they have, that's where the waste is typically located.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, no other questions, Mr. Kovacs? Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Ms. Chung?
Thank you. Next, we have our planner, Annie Hindenlang.
Cindy, I'd like to swear you in. Please raise your right hand. You swear affirm that the testimony you provided for the planning board this evening will be the truth?
I do.
Can you please state and spell your name for the record and give us your business address?
Yes, it's Annie, A N N I E, Hindenlang, H I N D E N L A N G. And I'm with Topology, which is located at 60 Union Street in Newark, New Jersey, at 07105.
Thanks, Brad.
Ms. Hindenlang, could you please briefly describe your educational and professional background for the board and describe any licenses or certifications you hold and generally state your qualifications?
Yeah, I have over 11 years' experience working in New Jersey planning and development. Typically, on your side of the screen, I represent several municipalities, about a dozen municipalities currently. I've been before numerous boards throughout the state, like I've listed many of them, and from projects ranging from residential to, you know, 6 million square feet industrial. And I've been licensed as a New Jersey professional planner and a nationally certified IAICP planner since 2014. I have three bachelor's degrees. One is in urban planning, and I have a master's in urban planning as well. And I'm currently, you know, a senior principal at Topology, which is a real estate and planning firm based in the Ironview.
Okay, thank you. We'll accept your credentials.
Ms. Hindenlang, could you please go over for the board the various variances that we need for this project? And I know that Mr. Michello had testified previously to some of the design waivers, but if there's anything that you need to touch upon in that regard, could you please do so for the board?
Yeah, again, I appreciate Laura's comments related to not repeating testimony. I think that Mr. Michello covered things pretty well. I'll just say that I do believe that the granting of the relief being sought here today does further, you know, I mean, the purpose of zoning in itself, the municipal land use law, most obviously, for, you know, trying to encourage the use of renewable energy. And that a lot of the waivers that were originally discussed or sought have been addressed. And overall, this is a project that doesn't just benefit the property owner itself, but the community as a whole is evidenced by interagency approval. One thing I would like to address is the buffer issue that was raised. The fence and the road itself are what would be illegally conforming pre-existing nonconformity, basically, an existing nonconformity that we're not proposing to intensify that, which is typically what would require variance. And we're also not seeking to modify that condition or disturb it anyways. So I would, I would argue that a variance isn't necessary for us to not address that. But I know the client in that applicant is willing to, you know, if it will help add additional landscaping and trees to the northern part of the site to address any concerns related to that.
I'm gonna stop you right there. You're saying this is a pre-existing nonconforming. Do you have evidence of that, a fact that it was legally pre-existing nonconforming use?
Based off the fact that the site was remediated in the 90s, and from my understanding, and the buffers and screeners, screening requirements came in in the 2000s.
No, that's not correct. And so regardless, you need to put testimony on the record other than the fact that you're going to add some trees. Like, what goal of zoning is that fence and the, and the, and the road advancing?
It's pre-existing, like it's there already.
That's not what I asked.
No, but I'm trying to explain. It's like, it's pre-existing and we're modifying or intensifying it. So it's not something that we have to address.
It is something you have to address. You're here for a preliminary final major site plan on this site. Existing conditions on this site are noncompliant. So this is our opportunity to make the site conforming. So you do have to address it. It's a, it was in my letter dated February 3, 2022. We brought it up at the, at the professionals meeting. Just because it's, you know, you don't want to address it, doesn't mean you don't have to address it. So at the end of the day, what goal of zoning in compliance with, there's two variances associated with this buffer, not just one, are you advancing by leaving a fence and a road in a residential buffer? When the site is 200-plus acres and there is the ability to remediate a noncompliant condition associated with this application?
If it is a noncompliant condition, both the road and the fence, then I would argue that if it was a requirement based off of the remediation, that's something we have to understand. If it was, you know, the fence was installed because of that, we'd have to look into that. That's my understanding, but I would argue that it's to protect the existing cap and, you know, protect the public welfare from the contamination on site.
So relocating a fence on the surface of the property is impacting the cap?
If you, if you're trying to keep people from accessing or controlling erosion related to a landfill and that fence is there to keep them from a particular spot, and I'm not going to testify as to what's there, but I have overseen the remediation of many places in New Jersey. The fence is there to keep people from accessing the site.
Okay, so, but the fence would still be there from allowing them to access the site if you were in a compliant condition 50 feet off the property line, which is required by ordinance. And the fact that you, like, this comment was in my letter in February. We're in May, and the fact that you don't have the information to address it is concerning to me.
I.
The buffers, as I said very, very clearly at the professionals meeting, is one of those provisions in our ordinance that this particular town takes extremely seriously. You're in an ARE6 zone. That's our largest, most rural residential zone. This is a non-residential use. You are required to provide a 50-foot buffer with two of four conditions associated with that buffer complied with. You don't. And so, you know, I would submit that there is the ability on a 200-plus acre site to create, to correct this nonconforming condition. So what I'm saying to you is if there was a legitimate reason associated with the remediation, that's information that you should be able to provide to us today, four months after the comment was provided, three months after the comment was provided. So, you know, saying it's there and so we should just be able to leave it there, in my opinion, is not satisfactory in terms of meeting the statutory criteria.
I believe Grace testified to that question, yeah.
Can I actually just interject a little bit? I'm wondering if this is a legal issue, and maybe this is a question for the board attorney. Isn't there a provision within the MLUL regarding pre-existing nonconforming structures or uses?
There is. However, you're coming in for a site plan. You're proposing a new use for this site. So rather than just using like the prior uses, infrastructure, want to explain why that infrastructure is suitable for the proposed use.
And I would also just further that question, Steve. You don't just get pre-existing nonconforming status. You have to prove it. So you have to prove that it was there legally and it predates the ordinance. You've done neither.
Is it possible for me to, right now, just bring up our engineer? Because I think he can address some of the issues with respect to the site characteristics as to why there may be an issue with respect to the fencing and the buffer?
I mean, didn't he already talk about this earlier?
But he didn't provide any evidence, in my opinion, that rebutted, but what Ms. Beam said, and I'll be honest with you. I take what Ms. Beam says with high regard. We trust our professionals. And she has always done what's in the best interest for this town and for this board. So unless, unless he has testimony that can provide a specific response to her question, I don't know what else he's going to be able to offer, but let's, let's give it a shot.
Yeah, I think there were, I think he had previously testified that there were certain site constraints. So if I could just bring him back really quickly just to address maybe some of the stuff that Ms. Beam is, is asking us.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I think I understand what the discussions are here. I just wanted to kind of explain maybe in a little more detail to the board and Mrs. Bean, why, why moving this road isn't as simple as just shifting it over 30, 40 feet, even though we have 200 acres here to work with. We're, you know, and I'm going to pull my exhibit back up in a moment, but just to kind of explain that this is sort of a pinch point on the corner of the property where the landfill is located. I mean, if, so let me just pull up, I'm gonna go back to my exhibit. It's my environmental constraints exhibit, which was a 14 for the, for the record. And I don't want to mark up on here, but I do want to, hopefully you can see where my pointer is.
You gotta share.
Got to share my screen first. I'm sorry. Yes, got to low zoom.
Allows us to have this interaction that we.
You're absolutely right.
Have. It's got its pluses and its minuses.
Yep, especially when you forget to unmute yourself or share your screen. All right, so here's the property line of the, of the site. And if you look here, the green shaded areas are the wetlands. And there's wetlands right up to the edge of this, this existing gravel drive. And here's the gravel drive where my pointer is. It might be a little bit difficult to see, but it's this dotted hatched drive that comes through here. And you can see how it splits this wetland complex number 10, because this is the road that.
I think you froze.
Yep.
I just reached out to him to try to log back in.
Thank you.
That he's reconnecting right now. That he's reconnecting right now.
I, I'm sorry about that, Mr. Chairman, my internet connection cut out.
No worries. Please continue.
But I, I, I'm not sure where I, um, where you lost me.
You were, you were talking about the road bifurcating the wetlands.
Okay, so right, so the gravel drive, if I zoom in here, is this, this da, the small dots here on the gravel drive that goes through the, the wetland complex. And the grade change in this area is anywhere from fifty-two, elevation fifty-two to fifty-six up to. The top of the cap, which is elevation seventy, seventy-one, seventy-two. So there's a fifteen-foot. Grade change here. Also too, this dark black line that's on the plan represents the, the, the approximate location. Of the landfill cap itself. Um, so given the fact that where this road is located, the fifty-foot buffer line would probably fall. Somewhere in where it says wetlands number nine over here. Um, and in order to, to move this over, one would actually have to. Um, dig into the landfill and expose the, 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 the waste that within the cap to regrade that slope, which is not something that. We particularly would want to have to do here on this site, given that the landfill is capped and it's no longer. Um, you know, it's, 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 it's static in terms of its, 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 its operation now at this point. Um, so keeping the road where it is from an engineering perspective, so we don't, um, you know, harm the cap. Um, see, it would be the, 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 um, the most logical thing in this location. Um, understanding that it is within that fifty-foot buffer and we did. Offer to say that we may be able to, we can enhance some landscaping along the edge here. Um, with, with the road and the fence. I, I do want to point out that the closest, and I'll go back to exhibit A thirteen. Um, the, the closest residential um homes to this property i- i- is a few hu, a few hundred feet away. And they are not visible um from the, the, the site when we were out here and, and we're looking that way. Um, when, when we, when we inspected the property. So while the, the ordinance requires the fifty-foot buffer, th- there's plenty of existing. Buffer beyond that as well, that, that provides screening um for the site, but we can certainly do some enhancement along there. Um, but to move that, that road would definitely be a, an issue from a landfill perspective. Um, I do, I can't testify to, to when, um, the exact date of, of when it was created. I do not have that information available.
Look, Mr. Michelle. I don't know how else anybody else on the board, board feels, but Ms. Beam is pretty passionate about this one. I think she's put pretty, in my opinion. For at least for me. Uh, acceptable testimony that there is a possible solution. And it may, she even stated it, it may require a reduction in a couple of, of solar panels. Is that, was that a correct statement, Ms. Beam?
It was, yeah.
So, so to hear you say that there is no solution is tough for, for me as a board member to hear. When our professionals who we trust, we've known for years. Is telling us that, that there is a potential solution. You talked about that potential solution. And then you guys decided just to completely ignore it and then just try to drag, jam down our throat. We're just gonna leave the road because it's already there. I, I don't know what is true. Except I've got, I've got to stand behind my professionals. Anything out of, out of terms here?
Um, I certainly understand, Mr. Chairman. I, I maybe I missed.
I like Ms. Beam to answer.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I, I agree. No, you're not at all. I, you know, while I do understand that if you're staying right at the fifty-foot mark, you're talking about the slope associated with the landfill. But that's not to say that it couldn't be moved farther into the site. Um. That would not require digging into the cap. So if you can create an installation, a solar installation that doesn't dig into the cap. You can figure out a way to put a fence and clearly a road is not gonna dig into the cap either. So, you know, I mean, listen, it's ultimately it's up to the board. But this is not a section of the ordinance that this board or the township takes lightly at all. So ultimately, it's gonna be you guys' decision on whether or not you wanna allow them to keep the, keep the um. Improvements in the buffer or you want them to comply.
Fair enough.
And, and Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to just confirm one thing. We're, uh, just from the comments, we're talking, we're only talking about the road and the fence here. I wasn't sure if Ms. Beam was referring to. Moving some solar panels as well. I wasn't sure. I didn't think that's what you were, you were referring to, but that's an option we can discuss. I would thought you were focused solely on the road.
I am, I am talking about the fence and the road, but you're saying that putting it. Outside where you have your proposed array would be impractical because of the slope and the potential impact to the landfill. I'm saying. Move it farther into the site and perhaps. Reevaluate where your panels are in order to accommodate the fence and the road. So that you don't have to dig into the slope and impact the landfill. So, you know, I haven't redesigned the site, but as I said, you know, these are comments that have been in the letter since February. You know, I wasn't. Issuing them in the letter lightly. It's something that you guys should have probably taken a little bit more to heart when you evaluated coming tonight. And, you know, the testimony that you've provided, quite honestly. I still don't see a goal of zoning that you're advancing. You can accommodate this internal to the two a, two hundred acre site and not require relief. And leaving it where it is because it's there now, even though you haven't provided any information as to. You know, why it was placed where it was, when it was placed where it was, whether or not it was placed there as part of the remediation. Whether it was there as a farm road earlier, you had provided no information associated with this road and the fence at all. To justify whether it's pre-existing. I think the testimony was quote-unquote legally. Pre, uh, pre-existing non-conforming. You have not demonstrated that's legally pre-existing non-conforming. You provided no information whatsoever. So ultimately, it's up to the board to decide whether they want to allow the road and the fence to stay, stay where it is. Given the testimony that you've provided, or they would like the site to comply. It's up to them.
Can I just, um. I, I hear what Ms. Beam is saying. I- is it possible for us to carry this? To take her, her comments right now into consideration and, and carry this to the next meeting so that we can kind of look into the issue? And maybe if there's a redesign that we can do to address some of the board's concerns. Um, and then come back uh with, with a, a plan of action, um, instead of letting this go to a vote tonight?
Absolutely. There's always an option. Yeah, absolutely. I'm sorry, Steve, I didn't mean to speak out of term for you.
No, no, Chairman, I mean, it's the applicant's case. If the applicant feels that it wants to examine. Um, responding to Jen's comments and it need, obviously designing a, a solar array on the fly is very difficult for even the best. Of, of developers, so if they need more time to, to kind of study that issue, by all means.
Yeah, and I'm just concerned with respect to, because it's, you know, because there is that cap there. I'm not sure in terms of, you know, D E P requirements and disturbing that. I, I, off the cuff, I, I'm not sure what the requirements are and I, I don't want to say that we can do something if we're, if we're not sure that we can do something. So if we can just go back, take Ms. Beam's comments into consideration, um, and then address them at the next hearing.
Thank you, Ms. John. Appreciate that.
But, Ms. Chen, can I ask you a question? So other than the witnesses you presented. Did you have any other witnesses this evening that you were gonna present?
The only other witnesses that I had actually were um, uh, representatives of the applicant. I know that there were some comments with respect to. Um, the board having questions regarding operations and management and if, if the, the board had specific questions, I ju, I was just gonna make them available so that they could answer those questions for you.
Cool. I don't have any, any particular questions about management. There's, there's gonna be a, a plan to decommission. Which I think is of importance and. Just general maintenance. If then somebody else on the board has any questions about that, I, I'd like their, since their, their witnesses are here today. Like them to be able to speak. Do any of our professionals have any questions or comments that, that may be applicable to those other witnesses? Ms. Newman, you're, you're muted. Don't know if you have any thing.
No, Mr. Chairman, I do not.
Thank you.
I'm good.
Okay. May, Ms. John, sounds like you got your answer.
Thank you very much.
But, just one question, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
So.
Bye-bye.
You know. Mrs. Beam just testified, like, you guys knew this prior to this meeting, that this is something that we would want. As far as, you know, making this application. You know, fully compliant. I know you're asking for, you know, to move it on down the line, but you knew this since February. So I'm just curious why it wasn't addressed prior to that. Or not addressed now while we're here.
But I think we were attempting to address it with respect to the testimony. Um, regarding the fifty-foot buffer, but I, I think the way we're addressing it is, is. I'm taking it is, it's not being, uh, it's not deemed satisfactory. Um, so we're attempting to address it. Um, but I, I'm getting the sense that it's not satisfactory to the board or the planner. So we would like to take the comments that we've received tonight and to address it further.
Alright.
Thank you. Any other further questions? If not. Steve?
Um, well, let's, I lead in terms of our scheduling, uh, Ms. Chen. Uh, her preference is our next meeting. Is, is there room on that agenda or how are we doing?
Our next meeting is next Thursday, May nineteenth. The agenda's already been posted. Uh, there's only one application on there. The next meeting after that is June second, which has an application that's probably gonna move off of that date.
So, Ms. Chen, I mean, uh, there's availability, you come back next week. Do you think that's enough time for you to do your analysis and, or do you need more time than that?
Um, if I could just ask my professionals if, if they're available. So May nineteenth does not work. I think you offered a June date. Is that available? I'm sorry.
June second.
Okay, uh, we will take that June second date. Our, our, our professionals can be available that date.
Okay, and uh, just, this is more of a question for Chairman Tenhouse and our, and Laura. To the extent the applicant wants to submit a, a revised plan, when do you need the, to have those to be prepared for June second?
I'm missing. Probably, um, for me, end of next week, beginning of the following week. I know that there's Memorial Day in there.
It's usually ten days ahead, isn't it?
Yeah, which would be the twenty.
Twenty-third.
The twenty-third.
That would be enough time for me.
Ms. Chen, now you, you heard that. Is that realistic and reasonable? If, if you're gonna submit something in terms of a revised drawing, could you get it in by that?
Um, let me see if, if my engineer can do that. Mr. Michelle, I, I think you're better equipped to answer that.
I mean, if, if it's, if we just would present one sheet or one drawing, she'd not have to revise the whole drawing set. Um, we can certainly get something in by then, um, depending on what our ultimate solution is.
Right. So Chairman, uh, should we carry this on notice to, uh, June second?
Sounds good to me.
Okay, if there's anybody here in the public that's interested in case number S P dash ten ninety-nine Mama Solar Number One LLC. For preliminary final major site plan, this applicant, the public hearing on this application. Is being carried on notice to the board's regularly scheduled meeting of June second, twenty twenty-two at seven P M. Uh, it'll, it'll be, I'm sorry, seven, seven, seven thirty, right?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock, seven P M. It'll most likely be by Zoom as is this evening, uh, but please check the website. Uh, to make sure that it's, it remains Zoom. So again, Mama Solar is being carried on notice. Uh, to June second, seven thirty. Seven P M. Uh, there'll be no further mailed or published notice. Thank you.
Thank you. Everyone have a good night. Alright, do we have any um master plan updates that we need to discuss or any reason to go to a second session?
No master plan.
Great, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Everyone have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Night, everyone.
Night.